Welcome to the joint committee to hear the initiative 2113. As most of you know, we always run a tight ship in the Law and Justice Committee, and I'm honored to be joined here with our House members for this joint event. And we are first going to start with staff briefing, so please do come up and tell us about the initiatives in front of us.
And thank you, Madam Chair, Mr. Chair of Committee Members. For the record, I'm Joe McKittrick, Staff Counsel to the Senate Law and Justice Committee.
And for the record, this is Corey Patton, Staff to the House Community Safety, Justice, and Reentry Committee.
And so today, we'll start by providing a brief background on the initiative process and vehicular pursuit legislation, then summarize the effects of the initiative. And finally, with the Chair's permission, Corey will present a brief PowerPoint highlighting the vehicular pursuit statute as it's evolved since its inception. So to begin, if an initiative to the legislature is certified, the legislature must take one of three actions. The legislature may adopt the initiative as proposed, in which case it becomes law without a vote of the people. Alternatively, the legislature may reject the measure or opt to take no action. In either of these scenarios, the measure will automatically be placed on the ballot in the next state general election. Finally, the legislature may adopt or may opt to propose an alternative to the initiative, in which case the initiative and the alternative will both appear on the ballot as competing measures in the next state general election. Now, turning to the background of vehicular pursuits, legislation in Washington. A vehicular pursuit is defined in statute as an attempt by a uniformed peace officer in a vehicle equipped with emergency lights and a siren to stop a moving vehicle when the operator of the vehicle appears to be aware the officer is signaling the operator to stop the vehicle, and the operator of the vehicle appears to be willfully resisting or ignoring the officer's attempt to stop the vehicle by increasing speed, making evasive maneuvers, or operating the vehicle in a reckless manner that endangers the safety of the community or the officer. In 2021, the legislature passed Engrossed Substitute House Bill 1054, which in part codified statewide vehicular pursuit regulations. The law prohibited vehicular pursuits unless the pursuing officer had probable cause to believe that a person in the vehicle has committed or is committing a violent offense, a sex offense, or an escape offense, or if the officer had reasonable suspicion that a person in the vehicle has committed or is committing a DUI offense. The pursuit must have also been necessary to either identify or apprehend the person, and the fleeing person must have posed an imminent threat to the safety of others, and the safety risks of failing to apprehend or identify the person must have been considered greater than the safety risks associated with the pursuit. The law also required supervisory control of the pursuit, but made certain exceptions to this requirement for jurisdictions with fewer than 10 commissioned officers. In 2023, the legislature passed Engrossed Substitute Senate Bill 5352, which modified the regulations on vehicle pursuits. Under the new law, the evidentiary threshold to engage in a pursuit was lowered from probable cause to reasonable suspicion that a person in the vehicle has committed or is committing any one of the enumerated offenses. And the crimes of vehicular assault and domestic violent assault were added to the list of crimes for which an officer may initiate a pursuit. Rather than receiving authorization for pursuit under the new law, officers are now required to notify their supervisor, who then maintains oversight of the pursuit. However, exceptions again were made for jurisdictions with fewer than 15 rather than 10 commissioned officers. Requirements were also added regarding coordinating pursuits with surrounding jurisdictions that may be impacted by the pursuit and communications between the officer, their supervising officer, and the dispatch agency. The new law also requires pursuing officers and supervising officers develop a plan or to develop a plan to end the pursuit as soon as practical. Finally, the law mandates that to engage in a vehicular pursuit, an officer must have completed an emergency vehicle operator's course and updated emergency vehicle operator's training within the previous two years, which includes training on performing the risk assessment analysis required to engage in a pursuit and to be certified in at least one pursuit intervention option. Now, turning to initiative 2113. The initiative amends the vehicular pursuit statute in two distinct ways. First, the evidentiary threshold to engage in a pursuit is modified. Under the initiative, an officer may not engage in a pursuit unless there is reasonable suspicion that a person has violated the law. Second, the risk assessment officers must undertake to engage in a pursuit is also modified. If enacted, an officer may not engage in a vehicular pursuit unless the person being pursued poses a threat to the safety of others and the safety risks of failing to apprehend or identify that person are considered to be greater than the safety risks of the pursuit under the circumstances. And if this initiative is enacted, all other current requirements to engage in a pursuit will remain in effect. And with that, unless there's any questions for me at this point, I'll turn it over to Corey to go over the specific evolution of the law over the past few years.
Go ahead, Corey.
All right, and just want to thank Joe for that comprehensive overview while we're getting the PowerPoint pulled up. The intention of this PowerPoint is to help orient us to particular places where the language is being changed in current statute. So just as a reminder, we're going to be looking at the changes that have essentially happened since 2021, which was when Engrossed Substitute House Bill 1054 was initially enacted, which codified the statewide regulations that we're discussing today. That bill was subsequently or that legislation was subsequently amended by Engrossed Senate Bill 5352 in 2023. In other words, Senate Bill 5352 is the bill that reflects current law. So as we're moving through this, if you're wondering which piece of language is the current law, it's going to be under the header of Senate Bill 5352. And finally, looking at, again, as Joe mentioned, the two distinct changes that are being made to the language by initiative 2113, that's before consideration before the committees today. So moving through this piece by piece, first, again, just looking at the definition of vehicular pursuit. Joe already went through this in his presentation, but essentially, the definition of vehicular pursuit since 2021 has been an attempt by a peace officer to stop a moving vehicle where the operator appears to be willfully resisting or ignoring the officer's attempts to stop by increasing speed, making evasive maneuvers, or otherwise operating the vehicle in a reckless manner. That has remained consistent since 2021 and would not be changed by the initiative. Second, and this is one of the elements where the initiative does make a change to current law, is the pursuable violation. So under current law, an officer may engage in vehicular pursuit where there is reasonable suspicion to believe that a person in the vehicle has committed one of the enumerated offenses that Joe previously discussed. Again, that's a violent offense, sex offense, vehicular assault, domestic violence assault, escape, or DUI. The initiative makes a change here to grant authorization to pursue where there is reasonable suspicion that a person has violated the law. Turning then to necessity and the risk assessment that's part of engaging in vehicular pursuits. Again, since being enacted in 2021, the statewide regulations have remained consistent with regard to what the pursuit must be necessary for, and that's for the purpose of identifying or apprehending the person. That has not changed since 2021 and would not change under the initiative. What would change under the initiative is the balancing test that must be performed by the officer when deciding whether or not to engage in the pursuit. Under current law, the balancing test is that the person who's being pursued must pose a serious risk of harm to others, and the risk of failing to apprehend or identify the person must be considered greater than the safety risks of the pursuit under the circumstances. The initiative changes that language so that the person must instead pose a threat to the safety of others. Again, that's opposed to being a serious risk of harm. Otherwise, the risk assessment remains the same. Turning then to supervision of the pursuit, beginning with 2021, we codified certain supervision requirements that required authorization from a supervisor as well as ongoing control by that supervisor. This was changed in 2023 to instead require notification of a supervising officer and supervisory oversight as opposed to control. There was also an exception in the 2023 legislation for jurisdictions with fewer than 15 commissioned officers. Those jurisdictions are subject to slightly modified conditions when a supervisor is not on duty at the time of the pursuit. These things in current law are not changed by the initiative. Moving then to compliance with agency procedures. So one of the requirements for engaging in the pursuit is that the officer and supervisor, if applicable, must comply with agency procedures. As we've been talking about all the elements of pursuits, what we're really describing is a floor, and agency procedures can further restrict or add modified conditions as long as they're consistent with the floor established by the state legislation. And so the pursuing officer must comply with those agency procedures in identifying the primary pursuit vehicle and the appropriate number of pursuing vehicles, as well as procedures for coordinating with other jurisdictions, including any applicable tribal jurisdictions. This, again, is not being changed by the initiative. Another requirement that was added in 2023 was the requirement for the pursuing officer to be able to directly communicate with other officers engaging in the pursuit, the supervisor, if in an applicable situation, as well as the dispatch agency. This also is not being changed by the initiative. With regards to ending pursuits, in 2023, we added the requirement that as soon as possible after initiating pursuit, the pursuing officer, supervisor, and responsible agency must develop a plan to end the pursuit through the use of available tactics. There's a non-exhaustive list of what those tactics could be, and it includes the pursuit intervention technique, or otherwise referred to as the PIT maneuver, as well as the deployment of spike strips or other tire deflation devices. None of this is changed by the initiative. In 2023, we also required certain training elements. Joe highlighted those. Again, those are that the pursuing officer must have completed emergency vehicle operator course, or EVOC, have completed updated training in the previous two years where applicable. And I want to note that that training must also include training on the risk assessment analysis. So that was that balancing test of risk of gauging in the pursuit versus the harm that's being posed by the person who is fleeing, as well as being certified in at least one of the aforementioned pursuit intervention options or techniques. None of this is being changed by the initiative. Finally, one of the requirements that's been codified in state law since 2021 is the restriction on firing weapons at a moving vehicle. Since 2021, officers have not been allowed to fire a weapon at a moving vehicle unless necessary to protect against an imminent threat of serious physical harm resulting from the operator or passenger's use of a deadly weapon. The one thing I would highlight here is that the vehicle itself is not automatically considered a deadly weapon unless it is specifically being utilized in that manner. None of this is being changed by the initiative. That concludes my remarks. Joe and I would be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you so much. Do any of the committee members have any questions for staff? Yes, Representative Goodman.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. I have a series of questions, if you wouldn't mind.
That's absolutely fine.
I've just heard the staff briefing that a lot of what is in the initiative is the same as what is in existing law, and I just wanted to make sure that we're clear on this, both the members and the public. So I'm going to ask a series of questions. I was the author of the striking amendment to 5352, so I'm sort of jealously trying to protect it. I want to make sure that what provisions are in the initiative that reflect current law. So the first question I have is with regard to supervisory oversight. Current law requires that the pursuing officer notify the supervisor immediately upon initiating the pursuit and that the alternatives be considered. Is any of that changed in the initiative?
No, Representative Goodman, none of that is being changed by the initiative.
Okay, thank you. Also, with the small jurisdictions, those under 15 commissioned officers, there's a little bit of a modification, not necessarily having to reach the supervisor, but whenever practicable. And then the same thing, considering alternatives to the pursuit, are there any changes there?
No, there are no changes. That exception for jurisdictions with fewer than 15 commissioned officers remains intact as it currently is in statute.
Okay, thank you. Also, about adjacent jurisdictions, does it require a requirement that the pursuing officer notify adjacent jurisdictions? Is there any change there?
No, and just to clarify that that's compliance with particular agency procedures for communicating with those jurisdictions, that remains intact as it currently is in statute.
Okay, thank you. And then we heard about spike strips and other tire deflation devices and developing a plan to end the pursuit as it ensues. There is no change there as well, is that correct?
That is correct. That plan must still be developed using those techniques as examples.
And then the training requirement, the emergency vehicle operations course, I guess the officers have to be trained within a two-year period, and that, again, has not changed. That's current law.
Those are still training requirements. The one thing that I would highlight is that because the initiative is changing the language of the risk assessment that must be performed, it's changing it from a serious risk of harm to a potential or poses a threat to safety. Because that risk assessment is part of the updated emergency vehicle operating training, there is that slight adjustment, but the training itself continues to be required.
Okay, thank you. That's my final question about the risk assessment analysis. So there is a change now from a serious, the balancing test is that if the risk to the public of not apprehending the individual is greater than the risk of the pursuit itself, then the pursuit could continue. Otherwise, if the risk of the pursuit is greater than the risk of not apprehending, the pursuit needs to be called off. But this is the standard here. It's being changed from serious risk of harm to threat to the safety of others. Is that, that's correct?
That is correct. That is one of the changes.
And is there any legal definition of those terms, or is this up to the discretion of the officer?
I'm not immediately familiar with particular definitions for serious risk of harm and safety of others. They're not provided in the statute in question. Case law does provide context around what constitutes an imminent threat, which was the standard in 2021 before the changes in the 2023 session and the changes that are before the committees today. But I'm not familiar with how serious risk of harm or threat would necessarily be defined within the context of these pursuits.
Okay, thank you very much. Thanks for your indulgence with the series of questions, Madam Chair.
Absolutely. Do any of the other members have any questions? Yes, Senator Wagner.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is kind of a scenario, if enacted or if not enacted. And if you can't answer it, maybe one of our testifiers can. But if I have a personal firearm locked in my glove box, in a locked car, in a locked garage, and somebody steals it, under a current situation, would there be a pursuit to recover that vehicle and bad guy with a gun or not? And if enacted, would there be a pursuit to recover that firearm and bad guy or not?
And I can take this question, Senator. And it's difficult to give a specific answer, and like you said, one of our testifiers may be able to give a more robust answer than I can. But what I can say is, under current law, if the officer has probable cause to believe that a person has stolen a vehicle or stolen a firearm, those are both considered Class B felonies, and they are not considered violent offenses. So those would not rise to the level of a crime that an officer could pursue under the current law. If the initiative was enacted, since it says that the officer needs only reasonable suspicion that a person has violated the law, I would say that those crimes would be able, would be pursuable.
Thank you.
Yes, Senator Trudeau.
Thank you. Just to follow up to that question, if that, if a firearm was used in a violent crime that would rise to the Class A felony level, would that authorize a pursuit?
Under current law and under the initiative, yes.
Any other questions for staff? Yes, sorry, Representative Farvar.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. Thank you all for this great briefing. So this is a challenge that's not only for Washington State, but really across the country. And I understand that there have been some best practices developed by, for police pursuits. I'm wondering if either of you might be able to talk a little bit about what those are?
I can answer. Thank you for the question, Representative. In 2023, the Department of Justice, I believe it's the Community Oriented Policing Service, released a vehicle pursuits recommendations for police department policies. And those, I believe there's around 40 different recommendations that they've provided that go over everything from the definition of pursuit, when officers can engage in a pursuit, when they should terminate, coordination with supervisors, and communication with other jurisdictions, and on the back end, debriefing, and providing reports and data on aggregate data on pursuits for the jurisdiction.
Follow up, yes.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I'm definitely not going to ask you to go over those 40 different recommendations. That would be a bit much. But I'm wondering, current law versus the initiative, are those best practices reflected anywhere in that?
So I did have an opportunity to review these recommendations from the, what I'll call the COPS program, is the abbreviation. And I broke them down similar to the headers that we had in our, in our PowerPoint here about initiating a pursuit, the necessity of the pursuit, supervisor control, coordination with other jurisdictions, and communication between officers and terminating the pursuit. So under the recommendations from the COPS program for initiating a pursuit, the COPS program says that pursuit must be, is permitted only for violent crimes. It doesn't give a definition of what violent crimes is. So I think that that's a bit open to interpretation. It also states that a pursuit is allowable if, I believe, if the person poses an imminent threat of serious harm or death to the community or the officer. In current law, as Corey and I both said, the current standard to initiate a pursuit is that reasonable suspicion that a person has committed a violent offense, sex offense, vehicular assault, DV assault, or DUI. So it's, in that respect, current law is a little bit more expansive than the COPS recommendation. Under the initiative, it simply says that a person has violated the law. So I'd say that that is a much broader standard than the COPS recommendation. So going on to the necessity of the pursuit, under the recommendations, the recommendation is failure to immediately apprehend or the suspect or identify the suspect presents an imminent threat to the public based on the suspect's criminal actions. And it specifically notes that the criminal actions cannot or do not include the act of fleeing from the pursuing officer, so it has to be the actions that happened before the pursuit was initiated. Those are similar to the current statute, where it's necessary to identify or apprehend the person, and they pose a serious risk instead of an imminent risk. And then in, if the initiative was enacted, that's, that standard would be, again, broadened to that threat to safety of others. And as Corey noted, that's not defined in the statute or the initiative. And then supervisory control, that, as Corey indicated, that stays the same in the initiative and current law. And, but both current law and the initiative are a little bit broader than the recommendations from COPS, which says that there must be supervisor approval for continuing a pursuit. And then moving on, coordinating with other law enforcement agencies, again, this remains the same between the initiative and current law. Those both closely reflect the recommendations of the COPS program, where it states that agency policy should address interjurisdictional pursuits. And then moving on to communicating with other law enforcement officers engaged in the pursuit, again, current law and the initiative, it remains the same in between both, and both of those, again, reflect the recommendations of the COPS program. However, there's not one specific recommendation that touches on that topic under COPS, but it's a broad theme through many of the recommendations about continuing communication between all involved officers and agencies. And then finally, terminating the pursuit, the recommendation from the COPS program is that any officer involved in the pursuit can decide that the pursuit should be terminated if the risks of the pursuit are no longer justified. This is different than current law and the initiative, and again, the initiative and current law would treat this situation the same. I can't say whether one's broader than the other, the initiative or the current law or the recommendations. Current law, again, says that as soon as practical, the initiative or the officer and the supervisor should develop that plan to end the pursuit. So as the COPS program recommends, recommends that any officer involved can state that the pursuit is terminated. That's not specifically addressed in law, but I hope that answers your question, probably more than you want.
Very quickly, because we have two more questions, and then we should get to the public testifiers.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. I'll be quick. So I'm just trying to summarize. It does sound like current law comes much closer to the best practices that have been nationally established in the areas, at least where the current law and initiative differ. I'm not sure if you can actually answer that question, but that...
Yeah, I don't think I can answer that question.
We may have others who'll get to it.
Thank you, thank you, Madam Chair.
And then Senator Kuter, and after that, we have Representative Fosse.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So the loosening of the restrictions in the initiative, is there research that points us to how much of an increase risk to public safety there is with doing that?
Senator, I'm not aware of any research that would prospectively look at how these changes would affect the number of pursuits or the outcomes of those pursuits or any accidents that could be involved. I don't know if...
We'll wait and hear from others on that. Representative Fosse, and then ending us on questions for staff will be Representative Simmons. Go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Is there anything in the initiative that would prohibit jurisdictions from maintaining a current more restrictive pursuit policy or from adopting the best practices that you mentioned, or as those best practices may evolve?
So Representative Fosse, as previously mentioned, the current law, as well as if you were to enact the initiative, sets the floor for statewide policies. So at a minimum, the legislation sets the floor for what different agencies have to adhere to. Agencies do currently, in some instances, have more restrictive policies. The initiative would not change the ability of individual agencies to have more restrictive or differing policies as long as they conform to the minimum standard set by the statewide legislation.
Thank you, Representative Simmons.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I am curious, in the last couple of days, there was some new research put out around the increase in police discretion also increases racial profiling. And I was wondering if you're aware of that research that was released within the last couple of days? And is there anything in this initiative that would account for that or take the fact that that research showed four times more likely for black people to die in vehicular pursuits than white people? And I was wondering if there's anything in this initiative that's going to take that into consideration?
So Representative Simmons, I'm not immediately familiar with the research that you're citing too. What I can say about the initiative is that nothing in the current statute nor in the initiative specifically describes taking into account racial disparities. There's no language in the initiative that would specifically identify and address that particular concern. The language in the initiative is, again, as Joe and I have mentioned, just specific to language changes for those two aspects of our current statewide policies.
Thank you. Thank you so much for that briefing. And with that, we're going to go to our first in-person panel, which is going to be Jim Walsh, James McMahon, and Brian Haywood. And I want our second panel to be prepared. That'd be Albert Jeffrey, Josh Parker, and James Shrimshaw. Welcome. Please do introduce yourselves and begin.
Well, good morning, and Chairs Dingra and Goodman, and Ranking Members Patton and Mossbrucker, and everyone else. A few of you I've seen a couple of times in the last few days, so good to see you engaged. I'm Jim Walsh. For the record, I'm a state representative from the 19th District. I'm also the person who filed initiative 2113 with the Secretary of State. We are at a critical point in this state's history and the public safety of the people of this state. And initiative 2113 takes a very narrow touch to do the one thing, the single action we can take to most effectively fight crime in Washington State. As you've heard in the very able and thorough brief from staff, this initiative touches on just a couple sections of our existing law related to police pursuits. It leaves in place the standards for training, for supervision... It leaves in place the standards for training, for supervision of police pursuits, and changes only the standard of discretion that the pursuing officer has to meet to chase a criminal or criminal suspect. I believe that this change will help law enforcement be more effective. To the question of law enforcement officers' mental health or well-being, I think it will improve that. And that will give them the ability to exercise their training and judgment more effectively to enforce the law. As you know, the people of this state are, are suffering increasing rates of crime, property crime, violent crime. And they're calling out to us, what can we do? Please do something. Well, this is the best single something we can do. I, I shaped this initiative in talking with law enforcement, both in my part of the state and elsewhere. And when I talked to cops and sheriff's deputies and other people in that line of work, they told me the one thing, more than anything else, that we need is the ability to chase bad people. This initiative has found overwhelming popularity and support among the people of Washington. If you look at how people have registered their opinion about this initiative for your hearing today, overwhelmingly supporting this initiative. It's a good thing, and it will make the quality of life for people in Washington better. Please vote it out of your respective committees. Let's vote it out of the legislature. Let's get it into law now so that we can make things better for the people of Washington as quickly as possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead, Brian.
I'd like to thank the committee this morning for giving us a chance to voice and give voice to the 434,000 people that signed this initiative and the over 5,000 people that signed in pro. This was never intended, sometimes is portrayed as being something about a 250 mile an hour chase through a neighborhood in the middle of the afternoon. That's not the intent of this initiative. This initiative is first and foremost to restore local jurisdiction over making the rules on when a chase or a pursuit should occur. As has been noted earlier, this would not prohibit certain jurisdictions from having stricter controls than other places. We're completely fine with that. But what's happened with the current law is that we've had, first of all, an, an increasing disregard for the law. You get citizens that feel like if they won't pursue a criminal who steals a car, then why should I obey the speed limit? That is a bad precedence to put into a society. Number two, it begins a mistrust of the police. This is not good for any society throughout time. Number three, it demoralizes the police workforce. Had an opportunity to speak with walk-ups, and I saw in their faces the complete degradation that they feel for being victimized or made the bad guys for all the problems that are occurring, but not being allowed to go and fix it. Number four, there is an increase in crime in general, but specifically, there's an increase in car theft. We have become the nation's leader in car theft. We should not be the nation leader in car theft. There's no reason for this because what car theft has become is a getaway free car system. As that has happened, finally, then we've had skyrocketing increases in our car insurance rates. This is a direct result of an increased car theft caused by the inability of the police to pursue bad guys when they've done bad things. Finally, and I hope we'll hear testimony from, from the Gold, Gold Aides today, there has been more than one case of loss of life that's resulted because bad guys that could have been caught were not put away and they were allowed to go out and commit more crimes. And in particular, yesterday in Bellevue, if you were following the news, there was a rape on campus. The police locked everything down. They had a description of the suspect. But because of the current law restrictions, the police did not feel empowered when they saw someone in a car that looked like it might be the suspect. They did not feel empowered to pursue the person, and they're still at large. I urge you strongly to vote this out of committee, put it on the, put it to the vote and pass this so that we can restore safety and trust in our system. Thank you very much.
Thank you. James McMahon?
Good morning, Madam Chair. Mr. Chair and members of the committee, I'm James McMahon, Policy Director with the Association of Sheriff's and Police Chiefs, testifying in support of Initiative 2113. I want to thank you for taking the time to consider this. The Association of Sheriff's and Police Chiefs generally does not take positions on initiatives. The proposed changes in this initiative are consistent with the policy positions that we have advocated for, for the past three years. Law enforcement recognizes the potential dangers of vehicular pursuits, and no one wants more pursuits. However, overly restrictive laws that allow fleeing from law enforcement to be a get out of jail free card are not the solution. Data from law enforcement agencies demonstrate that significantly more people are fleeing our officers since this original statute was enacted. During that same timeframe, we've seen increasing crime rates, we've seen increasing traffic collisions and traffic fatalities in our, on our roadways. Washington cannot afford to continue fostering an environment in which empowers criminals, jeopardizes public safety, and diminishes the rule of law. To be clear, while we support this initiative and the greater authority it grants law enforcement to respond to fleeing offenders, we do not want that to be the only option that our officers have to apprehend those who commit crimes. We support this initiative and also ask the legislature to give us the tools to reduce the need for a vehicular pursuit in the first place by enacting the initiative alongside stronger penalties to deter illegal conduct. We think the legislature can make a significant difference in making our roadways and our communities safer.
Thank you so much. Senator Solomon has a question.
Mr. Haywood, you said that there was a rape on campus and that the police did not feel they had the ability to pursue, but the current law says that if there's reasonable suspicion to believe that a person committed a sex offense or a violent offense, that they may be, they may pursue. So that doesn't square with what the law is.
I'm going by what was said on the news yesterday. The, the police did not pursue the suspect. They weren't completely convinced that he was the person, and therefore, they did not feel they had the authority. I'm not, I can't speak to the actual judgment they made there. I'm just saying that what was, what was reported yesterday. So at the very least, it's caused confusion in what the police feel like they are allowed to do.
Senator Trudeau?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm just curious, you know, you talked about folks that are impacted or victimized by this and the consultation that went into this initiative. But I'm wondering, you know, for the families of folks who have been paralyzed and injured as bystanders, which I know of at least four situations where there were nonviolent offenses and the result was devastating to the families, I'm just curious, were any of those voices incorporated in the consultation of this initiative? And what, what was the result of that?
I've not spoken to anyone that, that experienced that, and I express deep concern and condolences for families that have lost life. We don't support that. And as, as the gentleman suggested, the ideal is not to have to chase criminals to begin with. But when we've loosened our laws so much that criminals feel emboldened and empowered to act without concern for what the police will do, I believe that we'll have much more loss of life, loss of mobility, and much greater crime by not making it clear that certain activities are not acceptable within society. And we haven't done that with this law.
Representative Graham?
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is for James McMahon. So in the situation in, in which we were just talking about a family member who might have had somebody killed or injured in one of the pursuits, have you heard from crime victims that have been in support of if, if we were enforcing our laws and not going soft on crime, that they wouldn't be committing these crimes to begin with, especially when we were dealing with a situation where if somebody kills somebody in a vehicular assault, it, it was 90 days that, that they got in jail? And, and we actually had legislation that we were dealing with to try to change that? Do you think that the crime victims would have, would be more in favor of actually holding the people that are deciding not to follow our laws more accountable?
Yeah, thank you, Representative, and I appreciate you bringing up victims of crime. I think that's a voice that isn't heard as much as it should be in, in the policymaking arena generally. I, I think, I think this body is about to hear from exactly one of those victims. But I agree with the general sentiment, right? If people quit hurting each other, we wouldn't have to deal with this in the first place. And, and that's our ultimate goal.
James, I have another question for you. We heard a lot about the risk assessment that's modified. And the, the report that came out in 2023 that talks about best practices says that the risk assessment really should be about an imminent threat. I know in our state, that's how the House bill started. It was then changed to go to serious risk of harm to others, and now it says poses a threat to safety. Can you comment on the best practices recommendation that was made with consultation from law enforcement and the dramatic change in the assessment and the initiative? It's pretty dramatic to go from imminent risk to serious risk of harm to others versus simply a threat of safety to others.
Sure. Thank you, Senator. If I'm, if I'm thinking of the same report, there have been a couple that you're referencing. There's a couple of things that I think are relevant, not to discredit the port, the report at all. I think there's significant value there. We find it interesting that those who comprise the group that, that put that study together are all generally from the East Coast of the U.S. And there was very little, if any, consultation about Washington or even the Western region of the U.S. I also think that it's important to recognize who the audience of that report was. That was not a report, and as I believe, intended to guide legislatures enacting statewide statutes. That was a report intended to guide law enforcement executives about the policies in their own agencies. And I think that's an important distinction. The other thing to remember is that the, as proposed here, this is a floor. And as the committee heard and asked questions about, nothing in this prohibits a law enforcement agency from having a policy that's more restrictive than the statute, including the very threshold for that risk assessment that needs to happen. And frankly, we think that's good. Many of us know that prior to the 21, 2021 change in statute, most of our agencies had incredibly restrictive pursuit policies. It was, we believe, that the change in that statute where the general community knew that the legislature prohibited our officers from engaging in that pursuit, we think was a significant contributing factor to that in the first place.
Thank you. I just want to make sure you mention the multiple reports. The ones we're both talking about is the U.S. Department of Justice report.
Okay.
Thank you. Senator Kudrow has a question.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So James, under the initiative language, would an officer following someone with an expired tabs, let's say, would they be able to engage in a high-speed chase if they felt that was a bad guy and it was in a school zone?
No.
And can you explain why that would be the case?
Sure. So officers feeling like it's a bad guy, that's not a reasonably articulable thing that, that exists in our system. And, and I'll also, I'll also state, there's been a lot of reference to high-speed pursuits in, in the years-long discussion that we've had about this. Nothing in the underlying statute dictates that these are high-speed pursuits. I, I go back to O.J. Simpson of, you know, the 20 or 30 mile an hour chase on the freeway. That's a vehicular pursuit under the statute as well. In no case, in my mind, would expired tabs constitute placing any person's life in danger, especially those in a school.
I understand, but it is a violation of the law, is it not?
Right.
And doesn't the initiative language say that there's reasonable suspicion a person has violated the law?
It also.
An expired tab would be reasonable suspicion they violated the law, would it not?
It also says, Senator.
I just would like to know, yes, it does say that, right?
Okay, let's move on. I see no other questions.
Am I able to answer, Senator?
I, I think we can move on from that.
Okay.
Seeing no other questions, we're going to get the next panel. Thank you so much. Albert Jeffrey, Josh Parker, and James Shrimsher. Albert Jeffrey, can you please, oh, Jeffrey Albert, I'm sorry. Please do unmute and introduce yourself.
Well, good, good morning, everyone. My name is Jeffrey Albert. I got my, earned my PhD at Washington State University, and I've been studying and working with police pursuits for the last 30 years. I've been writing policies in cities, including Seattle, Miami, Oakland, New Orleans, Baltimore, Atlanta, and, and dozens, if not hundreds, of others. I, I provided seminars at the Washington Criminal Justice Training Commission on pursuits and, and worked with, with a lot of cities in Washington and police chiefs. I was also the working group director for the Justice Department study you've been talking about and have a lot of information I'm happy to share with you on how that was put together and what the recommendations were. There was a little misinformation going on. And I guess the, well, and also as part of my background and experience, I testified to President Obama's 21st Century Task Force Report and President Trump's Presidential Commission on Law Enforcement and Administration of Justice. This is high-risk activities, pursuits, has been something I've been committed my professional life to. And I think it's important to understand that there, there is a lot of research out there and a lot of information that may even contradict some of the comments that have been made. I'm happy to answer questions about that. But basically, wanted to bring up the point of the study that we, we did with the COPS Office and NHTSA, and to understand that we had police chiefs, we have police executives from state agencies, from local agencies and sheriff's departments, where we did talk about all these issues. And the consensus, it was, well, let me put it this way, other than the PIT maneuver, there was consensus on not chasing those who were not violent criminals and, and posed an imminent threat. And it's because of the standards and, and in different departments that, yeah, we were looking at police executives, we weren't looking at legislation, because each, each state is going to have a different set of, of standards. We see a lot of violent misdemeanors. And I think it's the violence that matters, not the, not the designation of felony or, or misdemeanor. And that committee spent years going through these same issues and many more that you've been talking about, looking at the most recent research, bringing people in who were familiar. And yeah, we, we had a lot of discussions about victims. We had a lot of discussions about if you don't chase, what's going to happen? And let me just bring up one thing. In 2018, I believe it was, in, in Milwaukee, Wisconsin, the chief wrote a very restrictive policy, violent crime only. The Public Safety Commission in Milwaukee changed that. And I've got to say, the pursuits increased 100%, 98%, something like that. It was basically signing a, a death sentence to people on the road because the police started chasing everything. And, and yeah, the deaths, the, the crashes, the destruction, it really was horrible. And that's been seen in other cities around the country. A study we did for the Justice Department in Omaha and Miami in, in the 90s, for example, showed the same reaction, that when you reduce the pursuits, it doesn't impact the crime rate as much as perhaps the, the philosophy of the prosecutors, the sentencing issues you talked about earlier. There's so much more to it, and just pinning this on the pursuit is not realistic. It's a, it's an easy, yeah, if all you want to do is enforce laws, chase everyone, do what they did in the, in the 80s, chase until the wheels fall off. But the, the carnage on the roadways is going to be horrible. One of the main things we've got to consider is the police have no way to stop someone who's fleeing, other than the use of deadly force, whether it's a PIT maneuver or stopsticks. You see all the time people driving around stopsticks. And I believe that we've seen, it was either in Washington or Oregon, an officer who was killed by a suspect when, when he was putting out stop sticks. These are not easy things to do. So I'm happy to answer questions about the 30 years of work I've done in this, in this arena. And I will tell you, I started out being an advocate for pursuits until I started looking at the numbers. And once you look at the numbers and, and you see the research, not just that I've done, but was done in Roanoke, Virginia, showing when they restricted pursuits, it didn't have an impact on the crime rate. The crime rate was, was modified by other influences, including prosecutors and, and the, the, no respect to the law. You get caught, you're, it's a revolving door. You're out before the police officer finishes his or her report.
Thank you so much for, for that. Does anyone have any questions? Oh, Senator Trudeau?
I have a question around the standard that's in the initiative, and just curious on the safety, the risk to the safety of others. Have you seen anything like that? What does that mean to you? Does it exist as a legal standard anywhere? And can you, can you give us your opinion on what that would mean? would mean?
Well, I can't give you a legal opinion, but I can tell you a customary police practice. It's all over the board and it depends on training and it depends on supervision and accountability. So if you use that language, it's going to fluctuate depending on how the officers are trained and held accountable. And many times, the supervisor might even, each supervisor might have his or her own definition. So that's why we had, we came to the conclusion that we did, that you can't just have language, you've got to have training and supervision and accountability.
Thank you so much. Next person is Josh Parker. Please do unmute, introduce yourself and begin.
Thank you. Good morning. I'm Josh Parker, Senior Counsel at the Policing Project at NYU School of Law, a national organization dedicated to supporting more effective and equitable policing. My testimony today draws on our work with law enforcement agencies and states across the country on reforming their vehicle pursuit laws and policies. Although sometimes, public safety demands that an officer pursues someone fleeing a traffic stop, a growing body of data and research shows that all too often, these pursuits actually hurt public safety by putting the lives of officers and members of the public at risk. As John Ercard, the former sheriff of King County recently put it, "Police pursuits are like firing a 4,000-pound bullet down the street and 4,000-pound bullets kill people." Just yesterday, the San Francisco Chronicle, a West Coast publication, published a thorough study showing that more than 3,000 people died in police vehicle pursuits in the past five years, including more than 500 bystanders. And according to federal government estimates, police pursuits injured more than 52,000 people from 2017 to 2021. That Chronicle study also importantly found that just one out of 15 people killed were chased for violent crimes. Most of the time, the study explained, officers are conducting chases at high speeds to stop drivers suspected of nonviolent crimes or low-level driving infractions like having a broken taillight or playing loud music. Not surprisingly, these pursuits result in officer injuries and deaths at alarming rates. A recent study found that pursuits account for more than 5% of all line-of-duty officer deaths. Pursuits are also costly. In the past five years, local governments and insurers have paid more than $80 million in settlements and judgments and lawsuits arising from pursuit-related injuries and deaths, according to that same study. And pursuits result in huge racial disparities. As Representative Simmons mentioned, the study that shows that police chases kill four times as many black people per capita as white people. Jurisdictions and law enforcement agencies across the country have begun responding to the immense danger and cost of pursuits by enacting laws and policies significantly restricting them. Most importantly, they only permit pursuits for certain specified, usually violent offenses in which the pursued person poses an imminent risk of harm to others. These jurisdictions recognize what the data bears out, that generally speaking, when given little guidance on when to pursue, officers far too often engage in risky pursuits for low-level offenses and infractions, needlessly putting their own and others' lives at risk. Smart, evidence-based pursuit restrictions further public safety and save lives. I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you so much. And with that, we're going to move to our next testifier, James Shrimsher. And then after that, we will have Amber Goldade and Sonia Joseph.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Mr. Chair, and the rest of the committee members. As you know, my name is James Shrimsher. I'm speaking here today as the police chief of the city of Algonia and the vice president of the Washington State Chapter of the Fraternal Order of Police. Last year, we adopted new rules into the, around pursuits. It had a balancing test. It limited what we could pursue for. This year, we have the initiative in front of us and the initiative also has a balancing test, but opens up pursuits, reasonable suspicion for violations of law. While the standards in the law now and the initiative differ, I believe they both strike a balance between law enforcement officers to effectively apprehend suspects, minimize the risk to public, and our peace officers. I further believe that it's important to have laws that keep up with changing times and reflect the evolving priorities and concerns of our society. This is why we have the initiative process. This is why this measures before you. By updating Washington law around police, we can ensure that justice is served without compromising the safety of innocent bystanders, the subjects, and our officers. Finally, I would like to point out the importance of resolving this issue and providing some consistent guidance for local law enforcement. Many departments, mine included, have long recognized the dangers of vehicle pursuits and have implemented more restrictive pursuit policies than state law allows. We also look at pursuits as a danger assessment and not a tool or a deterrent. Law enforcement can adopt, adapt our approach, provided we have clarity of policy. Strong professional development and consistent training and evaluation are the best ways to ensure the safety for all involved. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Next up will be Amber Goldade. And if... Yeah, come on up. And on deck after that will be Sonia Joseph. Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you for your time this morning. My name is Amber Goldade and I am urging each of you to vote yes on this initiative. My 12-year-old daughter, Immaculate, and her best friend Kathleen are victims of the no-pursuit law and would be victims of the current law. The man who struck and killed my daughter from behind and left Kathleen for dead on the side of the road was driving a stolen truck and high on meth. He was involved in a robbery two weeks prior. The police had him as he was fleeing, but they couldn't pursue. If they could have, he most likely would have been in jail on January 15th of 2022. My daughter would be alive and I wouldn't be here speaking today. Since my first testimony a year ago, three more children have died, two in Sunnyside and one in Kent. And just Monday, another person died and a child injured. We can't afford to wait until November for change. Each one of you has a huge opportunity to prevent future tragedies from happening. Please listen to the 420,000 Washingtonians who signed the initiative, both Democrats and Republicans, all wanting the same thing, safe roads and communities. Please remember Immaculate and Kathleen when you vote. Thank you for your time.
Thank you and I'm so sorry for your loss.
Thank you.
Next up will be Sonia Joseph and she will be closing our hearing out for today.
Good morning, Chair Dengra and Chair Goodman and members of the committee. My name is Sonia Joseph. I'm the board chair for Washington Coalition for Police Accountability. And my tragic story started when my firstborn son, Giovann, was profiled and pulled over in a traffic stop. Would he have lived if it was just a traffic stop? He complied and gave the officers his ID during that stop and then left. Running away, was that the cause of his death? Could they have mailed him a ticket? All of these questions run through my mind daily. I replay every possible scenario of what happened on June 24, 2017. It was a vehicular pursuit that escalated the situation. The deadly use of two PIT maneuvers, smashing into Giovann's car. And the officer who walked towards a moving vehicle while my son was trying to get away to save his life. And the two deadly shots fired. This accumulation in his death was a result of the actions during and after the pursuit. They murdered an unarmed young man. The officer claimed to fear for his life while he walked towards a moving vehicle. Forensics proves that Giovann's car was not used as a weapon, that it was driving away from the officer and not towards the officer. But the local King County prosecutors didn't file charges based on the malice law. When police prioritize public safety, I can stop worrying about my second child being the next victim of police violence, when he's driving home from school or walking to the store or just conversing with his friends. WCPA, Washington Coalition for Police Accountability opposes Initiative 2113 because it seeks to drag back the state law. Allowing pursuits for any infraction makes the streets more dangerous. Voting no on Initiative 2113 is the right thing to do. Unrestricted police pursuits just don't make sense. The current policy and state law saves lives and is balanced, effective, and aligns with the best practices of Washington state law enforcement. Thank you.
Thank you so much and I'm sorry about your loss as well. And with that, we conclude public hearing on, just a second, 2113. Pro not testifying, those 5,301, and con not testifying is 177. Senator Patton?
I was just going to indicate those same figures on the numbers of pro and con. Thank you.
Thank you. Senator Wexler?
Okay, great. We're all done then.
Thank you, everyone.